Welcome everyone to the fifth annual Mineral Point School Board Candidate Forum. I am Gibbs Burley, an anchor on Wake Up Mineral Point, which you can view each weekday at cornermedia.org. I'll be serving you as your moderator this evening. This is Ben Bastin with the Porter Student Council, who will also be asking questions. Recording this evening's program is my co-anchor on Wake Up Mineral Point, Henry Daly. If you have a question you would like to ask our panel, please grab a note card from the table as you enter and write it down. We will collect the cards. I also have some questions that were submitted online by stakeholders. Thank you to our candidates, because without them, we wouldn't be here tonight. Being a school board member is a difficult job with a great deal of responsibility. Thank you to Gary Sullivan, Joanie Heisner, Bob Janetka, Deborah Hints, Tony Dahl, and Andy Bush for being willing to take on this challenge. The candidates are sitting before you this evening, and the order of the names will appear on the ballot. To summarize, the election is set for Tuesday, April 7. Voters will be presented a ballot at the voting place that instructs them to vote for not more than three candidates. The top two recipients will be elected to the school board for a three-year term, while the third-place vote recipient will receive a two-year term. And with that, we get our questions.
So our first question, please tell us a little bit about yourself, including what motivates you to run for school board. Gary Sullivan.
Hi, my name is Gary Sullivan. I'm a 1999 graduate of Mineral Point High School. Married in 2003 to Angie Sullivan, I have three children in the district. After high school, I received a degree for M A T C in small engine repair. I ran a small engine repair shop and farmed at the same time until our operation grew, and my grandfather couldn't do certain jobs anymore, and I decided it was time to get away from the business and full-time farm. I was asked to be on the township supervisor in 2006, to which I took on, as at the time I was unhappy about a certain situation. I took on the chairman job in 2013 and still am. The one thing I've learned over the years is do not waste taxpayers' money. Whether it's a dollar, a penny, or $10,000, it's their money, and if you waste it, they're going to let you know about it. Both jobs have taught me over the years how to manage money, and the bigger question is what is actually necessary, and what is something you'd like to have. I took on the opportunity last fall to put my name in conversation for a vacant school board seat, as I have been very vocal over the years, both positive and of decisions I disagreed with, and I felt it was the opportunity for me to do something. And anybody that knows me knows, nobody bleeds blue and white more than me. And I wanted to be on the school board then, and I've enjoyed the time I've been on, and I'd ask for your consideration, and vote me out again, please.
So, good evening. My name is Joanie Heisner. I've lived in the Mineral Point School District for 13 years. I am the mother to three daughters who are Mineral Point Elementary School students, and my family and I live just outside of town. I have bachelor's degrees from South Dakota State University in agriculture business and agriculture economics, and a master's degree in business administration from Edgewood in Madison, Wisconsin. I have worked for 16 years in the financial services industry for John Deere, having worked in various jobs, including credit analysis, underwriting, marketing and sales, and in management of employees. I am interested in being a member of the school board, because I want to be a part of the conversations that are going to shape the future of our school district. We have such a gem here of a school district, and I want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to preserve that and keep moving it forward. I'm also interested in bringing a diverse voice to the school board. Our current school board, as it sits today, is comprised of all males, and I think that having a woman's voice and the voice of a mother, as well as the voice of somebody who doesn't come from Mineral Point but loves this community, can add some complexity to the conversations that we have as a school board and bring a unique perspective. So, I'm hoping to have that opportunity.
Thank you very much. My name is Bob Janetka. I moved to Mineral Point in 2015 with my wife and our daughter. Our daughter's now a sophomore at Mineral Point High School. Please don't hold the fact that I moved from Chicago against me. I chose here. In fact, one of the main reasons we chose Mineral Point after we moved here was the schools. So, we actually came here specifically when we relocated, went around, we went on probably what seemed like, there was a long lead time before we moved, so I bet poor Mr. Paul Skil was tired of giving us tours of the school, because we went on several. But, in that time, we had a chance to, I felt we really had a chance to get to know the staff, and really solidified our choice to move to Mineral Point, to choose this. Obviously, we think very highly of the schools. The schools perform excellently, but I always think there's things you can do better, and I think when you stop thinking there are things you can do better, that's when you no longer are performing at your top level. I've worked in human resources for 20 years, just over, dealing with issues, big and small, for companies, large and small. It gave me an opportunity to really consider the viewpoints of others, and also to work collaboratively, to come to decisions that make things better for everybody. And I now have time to give back. I'm retired, and now I have time to give back to the community. So, that's why I want to be on the school board, because I think I have some ideas that can help.
Hello. Mic mic crossed, okay? I'm a 1975 graduate of Mineral Point. I met my husband, and we moved up north, and we ran a dairy farm for 41 years. And when we decided to end that, we were looked at coming back to Mineral Point, where my family is and where I wanted to be. As far as my background, I was a dairy wife, raised three children. They all went on to college, which is remarkable in our family. My son, who gave quite a bit of interest to the school, became a teacher himself, so I've seen a lot of different sides of education. I was also a board member up there. I was an aide in special ed. I've been something down here in the district, and Dodgeville District also, over the last four years that we've been down here. I've learned to appreciate everything that the teachers and aides do for our district, and I really believe they work very hard, they care about the district, and simply, I just love being involved in the school board and being able to be involved in what they do, and what our children do. We can, as he had mentioned before, there's always places to do better in. But as long as you are listening to the parents and the kids, I think that means a lot. Thank you.
My name is Tony Dahl, and I am a native of Mineral Point. I graduated from Mineral Point High School in 1982. I went on to the University of Wisconsin-Madison, where I got a B.S. in elementary education. I have an M.A. in educational administration from Edgewood College, and I have a credential in special education from California State University, Los Angeles. In Wisconsin, when I worked, I was an elementary principal, an elementary teacher, a director of curriculum instruction, and a director of standards and assessment. I went out to California, and I taught special ed for many years, in middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. I moved back here in 2016, took a position as a corporate trainer for a couple of years, and then I went back into education, and I'm currently working in the Madison Metropolitan School District as a special ed teacher for middle school. One of the reasons I'm running, I want to run again for school board is because I think the education I received here in Mineral Point took me places, and I had no trouble wherever I went. When I went to college, and when I went to the colleges I went to, I was fine. I had a very fine education. I want to give back to the community. I want to make sure that we're fiscally responsible in all areas, and I also want to look at the curriculum and keep our curriculum as great as we can, so we can continue to be the great school district we are. There's always room for improvement, and I'd like to see some of the, when we get our test scores, we see some of those below average. I want to get them up to at least basic, and then up from basic, up there by looking at test results, talking with teachers, and talking with the board members.
Hi, my name is Andy Bush. Born and raised in Mineral Point, graduated in 1996. Want to start just by saying how excited I am that we have a full field up here of great candidates, and how exciting it is to have the high school students as a part of this. I think that just makes it more enjoyable for all of us. I've been on the board for three and a half years before losing my seat to apply for a position, and wasn't sure I was going to run again until many members of the community approached me, and reminded me how important it was, and the gravity of the position, and what it means to the students and staff to have somebody on the board represent them that has their best interests in mind. I want to continue to push our academic standards, so we're continuing to get good report cards, but as Tony said, also raising those kids who aren't achieving the marks we're looking for, to see what we can do to make them proficient. And the other thing I think that's really important, that maybe we don't focus on as much, is I had a tremendous experience here. I talk about it a lot when I went here, and if we can get every student that graduates after 13 years in this district, or if they move in, to be able to say the same thing, whether it's, you know, their own experience, they aren't all the same, but if everybody can say they had a great experience here, that's only going to do wonders for the school, and that's really, really what we're here for, is to provide a great education, but also a great experience for the students.
All right, thank you. For our second question, we'll start with Joanie. The second question is, what do you consider your biggest accomplishment as a board member to date? If you haven't been on the board, what is a goal you have, should you be elected?
So, having not served on the board, I will have to talk about a goal that I would have. A goal that I would see as being most important to me would really be around teacher retention and engagement. I believe that having world-class teachers is what allows us to provide such a great education, and so if I were on the school board, a key priority of mine would be to make sure that I understand what is attracting new teachers into our district, and what are we doing to retain the high-quality teachers we have. And then if we have teachers who aren't, who maybe aren't at the level we need them, ensuring that we're providing them the support that they need, and to enable them to grow into being the best possible educators for our students, because I believe that a great teacher can make a huge difference in a student's life, and all of the things that teachers do beyond teaching the curriculum are really what are going to shape our students into being productive members of society.
I also have never served on the board before, so I will talk about a goal. One major goal I would have, actually, is you walk around the school, I know we tell the kids from early on how important the world we live in is. And we encourage, through the garden, and we have the oak savanna, all these wonderful natural places. When you come here to a sporting event, or you come to any other kind of event, it's hard to recycle, okay? And this may sound like a small item, getting more recycling opportunities here at the school, but if we're telling kids from when they're little how important it is, but I'm sure, you know, we talk about Earth Day, we talk about all these other things, but we don't really give them the opportunity to take what they've learned and then use it. I can't tell you how many times I've walked home from a football game with plastic water bottles balled up in my pocket, because there's no place to recycle out there. And I think it really is, we're sending mixed messages to the children, when we don't give them an opportunity to practice what we tell them is a good way to live. Thank you.
My background was, we had done a $27 million build and remodel in our school district up in Chilton, and as board members, we were extremely responsible for every penny that was being spent. We made sure that the people that we were working with knew that we were watching everything they were doing, and making sure that it was done as well as could be, and where we could save, how we could make it better. Right now, in Mineral Point, you have a remodel project going on, and I know that it's, there's a lot of things that are involved with it, and as far as like, okay, first off, we're trying to get that ground level, make sure that that's set up correctly. We don't know what we're going to have to spend after that is done. We don't know really how much it's going to cost right now. They have assumptions, they have good data to follow along, but we, as a board member, have to be responsible that we are getting every penny that we can stretch out of that. So, I guess that's, would be my goal, is to make sure that we're on top of that and do the best we can for the district, because that's what gives our kids a better education.
I've been on the board for about a year and a half, and I think the accomplishments of the board that I've been with are basically, we've remained fiscally responsible, even being able to put extra monies into a fund for deferred maintenance, which I think is very important, because we have a lot of deferred maintenance in this district that needs to get done, and we have a good sum of money in there that we're able to put in there, which I think is very, very important. I also think that on this board, we've also been able to keep teacher salaries and benefits, and support staff salaries and benefits competitive among the small schools in this area, and that's very important when you're looking for staff, because staff will travel for better salaries, and we need to be, we need to make sure we're providing salaries that are common around districts and the schools of our size. And I think we've done a very good job with that, providing those salaries and benefits. So, there's two of the things that I think we've really accomplished as a board in the last year and a half that I've been on.
I apologize, this is going to sound like a bit of an echo, but that would be my favorite accomplishment in the three and a half years I've been on the board, is we've been able to stay within the budget and put money away into Fund 46 each year, while each year, after a number of freezes to the staff, we've been able to increase their pay and reward them for their hard work and good test scores, and also provide, continue to provide opportunities for the students, and add things, and be fiscally responsible, adding things and balancing our budget. When other districts have to cut, we're providing more opportunities for our students and staff to learn, and that's been, by far, my greatest pleasure on the board as an accomplishment.
Well, I've only been on the board since October, so I really don't think I can sit here and tell you people that I got to take credit for saving the district money, because I haven't been in a position really to do much. I've always been interested in the hiring of teachers, you know? Is it something that, can we get by with not hiring a teacher? Do we have to have two? We found a, we had a couple retirements, and I'm really interested in the conversations as what we do now as a board, moving forward, replacing the two retirees. The other one is being involved in the phasing for the elementary project. I had a lot of questions on that project, which is why I wanted to be on board, and just getting to understand now how this all works, and having the Fund 46, and do we use it all, do we save some? Just really enjoyed being part of that. Thanks.
How do you feel the board can best support the superintendent and work together to move the district forward?
Support the superintendent?
Yes.
I think one thing we can do to help the superintendent and the district move forward is really take a listen to what our students are saying, what the faculty and staff are saying, what is truly needed, and then trying to decide with the limited resources we have, what we can afford to do to help, again, keep the school district moving forward. I think the biggest thing a school board can help do is help to balance those needs against the very limited resources that we have. I think we do need to be fiscally responsible, and I think in order to do that, we need to know, really have a good list of what the needs really are, and then help prioritize where those funds can be spent.
How to help the superintendent do his job? Basically, we have to allow him to do his job. We, as board members, oversee our superintendent, but we are not, we should not be involved in day-to-day with the superintendent, because that is why we hire the superintendent. And first off, you've got a great one here, and that was a far cry from what I had to deal with before. So, I do know that his job is to make sure that he has good communication with his principals, and the principals have good communication with their teachers, and the teachers have good communication with parents and students. So, how can we best support him at this time in Mineral Point's history, I guess you could say right now? We just support him in doing his job, and being there for him if he has concerns. Thank you.
Echo a little bit of what Deb said. It is his job to run the school district. It's our job to help him. It's our job to ask questions about things. It's Mitch's job to give us those answers, and he does a very good job of that. Your staff morale comes from the top down. When you have someone at the top that can develop that staff morale, and staff working with each other, teachers, students, and support staff, that's 90% of the battle, and Mitch does that very well. So, it makes our, my job as a board member, a lot easier, because if I need something, I just call Mitch up and ask him a question. He gets back to me right away. He does a great job, and it is our duty to ask those questions. We get approached by people in the community all the time about certain kinds of things that's going on. That's our duty to ask him. It's our duty to meet as a board and ask tough questions if we need to ask tough questions. It's Mitch's duty to give us those answers back. If we don't like those answers, we can question him again and say, you know, we need to do this. But we have a very, right now, we have a very healthy, working relationship with the superintendent, I would say, as a board, and I'm very happy that we have that, because it can be a nightmare if you don't, and we're lucky here in Mineral Point to have that working relationship.
As Tony said, I think the best way to support the superintendent is to have a strong working relationship and have trust built there. I think one of the things the board can do to really help the superintendent do his job well is to set goals and set directives, and let him know what the expectations are for the school year, or the next three years, or the next five years, and what the vision is, because he's really got to be the person in charge of leading that vision. And then set, you know, clear rubric, or identify what he's actually going to be judged on doing his job. And that hasn't always been clear, and I think that makes his job a lot easier if he understands the directives that the board expects of him from the 30,000-foot level, and then how he is going to be, you know, graded on his job, to say.
Well, like most everyone said, communication is obviously the key. Lots of times, there's emails back and forth. We email him, he responds to us quickly. There'll be meetings before meetings, there'll be policy meetings that he calls for us to be there, and we be there. We give him our views, and then he proceeds from there, and he takes actions where it needs to be. So, I think communication is going to be, is the key for my answer, as far as being at meetings when he wants you at them, so when he's asking for which direction to go, then he can relay the message on down the line further.
So, I'll echo the previous comments as well around communication. I really see this as being a collaborative effort. There needs to be, it needs to be a really symbiotic relationship between the superintendent and the board, and once we've established a vision, and set goals, and helped prioritize what those goals are, the board needs to step back and give the superintendent the autonomy to do his job, and then give feedback on what's going well and what isn't. And the system is designed to work by allowing the superintendent to carry out the mission that's been set forth by the board. So, I believe that as a board member, or as a board, that that's the best route, is to follow what's in place.
The next question goes to Mrs. Hints, and that is, what qualities or behaviors should a school board member exhibit?
Qualities or behaviors? Boy. Yeah. Okay, first off, you are an elected official. That means that you have to act in a professional, responsible way. Qualities, you would hope that you have somebody that would be honest, forthright, concerned. I know, I always spoke with my heart. When we'd have board meetings, the guys would look at me and say, well, we never thought of that, because it was a woman's perspective looking at it versus a man's perspective looking at it. So, sometimes I would say things that were maybe not quite as professional as they should be, but I was speaking from the heart. You should definitely be treating people with respect. Everybody has different opinions. We have to listen. Everyone has different ways of how a child should be raised or not raised, and my belief is that it takes a village to raise a child. So, as a board member, you're part of that village. You're a very intricate part of that village, and that means that you have to be listening to so many different people. You listen to the parents, you listen to the school board members, you listen to the teachers, you listen to the child. That would be my perspective.
Echoing what Deb said, you are an elected official. You know, we are on YouTube after the meeting is, you know, it's recorded, so everybody's there to see us. And yes, we get in heated discussions in a board meeting, but that's what, you know, that's what meeting is. We all have our own opinions, but when we're done with that meeting, we're not mad at each other, you know? We're fine. And that happens in a meeting, not every meeting, but that happens. So, you know, you need to know how far you can go with that, so you don't offend others. I think that some qualities you need also are, you have to be a good listener. You really need to be a good listener on the board. You need to listen to community members, and students, and staff, and teachers, and the superintendent, because everybody has their own ideas, and so you take that all in, and then, you know, you put that out in a meeting, so everybody knows what's going in, going on. I think one of the qualities that I have, that I think is a benefit to the board, is that I have an educational background, which is 27 years in education, and then I have also a business. I've worked in business and been on the outside of education. So, I think that's important, because it balances it. Not that I'm better than anybody else on the board, it's just that I think it lends a different perspective, and I think that's what helps a board, is when you have, everybody's the same on the board, you know, you're not going to get much done. You need different perspectives. Need that quality of getting along, working together, and getting the important things out of the way.
I'm going to echo a few things. I think it's important to be, as Tony said, a very good listener, and willing to listen to everybody, and, you know, take their opinion to heart, and, you know, compare it to yours and actually weigh pros and cons. I mean, you need to be able to be passionate, but level-headed, and I think being transparent, being willing to answer for your actions, explain votes, you know, defend your stance is important, because certainly you're going to be asked to do so, and if that's something you take offense to, it's not a position for you. And just be, you know, just be concerned, caring about the students and the staff, and take their best interests into your decisions as you're making them.
Obviously, responsibility plays a huge key here. Your actions follow you, whether you're at a school board meeting, whether you're walking the halls, whether you're at sporting events, people see you, they know who you are, either you're a school board member or a member of the community. Responsibility, being at a meeting when they're called on, whether it's 3:00 in the afternoon, or whether it's a meeting before a school board meeting. You've been elected to be on a school board. You've got to find a way to get to those meetings. Hard questions you're going to get asked by the community. They want you to bring it to the school board. Sometimes you're going to have to swallow your pride, maybe not want to do it. There's a lot of things I've learned over the years I don't want to talk about, but some things have to be talked about. And then be able to listen to what other people may disagree with you on or agree with you on. You may not agree with everything that somebody else has to say, but we're here to be professional, and we got to respect their opinions.
So, when I think about the, really the qualities or the behaviors that should represent the school board, in my mind, the school board really represents our school district, and so the behaviors really should be, we should be modeling the behaviors that we want our students to show. our students to show. So things like being respectful of one another about just the way we act and the way we present ourselves, basic professionalism, common courtesy, a willingness to engage in meaningful conversations, to both hear what other people say, reflect on it, and then be willing to have conversation back with them and being able to share our opinions in a manner that allows us to move a conversation forward and isn't necessarily combative. And then also being fiscally responsible because as a school board member, we just don't have a choice not to be fiscally responsible. We owe it to all the taxpayers of the district.
Well, I think, to echo what some of the others have said, I do think we need to model behaviors that we expect to see out of the students and out of the faculty, out of the staff and administration. One thing, the way I like to look at things and the way I help keep things respectful sometimes, even if somebody's coming from a different point of view or somebody has something you don't think you may agree with right away, my assumption is that anybody that goes through the trouble to be on the school board, anybody who chooses to work in schools truly has the best interest of the children, of the students, in mind, okay? So even if there might be an idea I'm not wild about, I think, because I look at it as, you know, okay, so why do they think that's what's best for the school? And if you approach things that way, I think it's a lot easier to stay respectful and positive and actually let people speak and hear their ideas and hopefully come to something that can be agreeable for everybody.
This next hypothetical scenario, so it goes to Mr. Dolph first. Let's say the school board is in a budget shortfall, and you have to choose between funding the arts, so band choir art classes, and the athletics, sports, and fied. Which do you choose in the end?
You planned this, didn't you, for me first? That's a hard decision, you know? I mean, it's not a decision I'm going to take very lightly because I think both are very important. I definitely think extracurriculars, music band, forensics, all those kinds of things are very, very important. And I also think the athletics are very important. So I guess what I would say, I would have to meet with my board. I can't, you know, I'm, it'd be, okay, I'm going to tell you. It's going to be a very difficult situation for me because I don't know what I would do. I would probably try to find some way that we didn't have to make that decision, either by donations or by maybe even upping our fees or something of that nature. Because I just, it's a hard decision, and I can't tell you what I would do right now only because I don't know what I would do without meeting with the board, without meeting with other people, without talking to the community and finding out what's important to them. Or maybe we'll have somebody in the community say, hey, I'll fund the arts program for you. Okay, that's great. It's done. Then we can, or we'll fund the athletic program. The boosters will come in and help us so that we don't have to worry about that. But I would definitely need to speak with all the board members and community members and teachers and staff and students to find out what's important to them and why they feel that's important.
I'm going to preempt this by noting that I am a volunteer football coach and answer with the arts. I think, a couple of reasons, I believe we're talking, you know, if you're cutting arts, you're also cutting staff as we have art teachers, choir teachers, band teachers. And we do have coaches as well that are on, you know, the payroll, but that is not their career. That's not what they went to school for. I think both things provide great opportunities for students, and they learn so much more than music or football or tackling or how to play the drums. But I think we also live in a community that very strongly supports athletics. And I think if we had to make the choice, we would end up still having both because this community would not let athletics go away. So I think you put your tax dollars behind the arts and, you know, as Tony said, hope you can fundraise to keep both. I think I would go with the arts because I think there's no way this community would let, you know, athletics go. And I'm not certain I could say that about the entire community for the arts. So that's what I would do.
Well, a hypothetical question is obviously tough to answer. Without having any facts of any numbers in front of us, we co-op with Dodger on a couple of different sports. I'd obviously lean to look that direction. But if I say that, I know that's kind of slapping the face to the kids who are solely in Mineral Point. So without having any facts in front of us, you know, number-wise, dollar-wise, board members' opinion, I can't stand here and make any kind of an answer as whether I'd cut arts or sports because I'd quite frankly be lying to you people because I don't have any facts in front of me and I don't know what I would do.
I fall on the camp of I'm not completely sure that that situation would ever come to pass where we'd truly be at a position where we had to pick one or the other. But I would envision that there may be an opportunity to put all the money into a single fund and ask individuals who are truly passionate about it, students or organizations, to ask for a grant, to write, to propose to the school board how they would use the funds. So whether it's the forensics club or the football team or somewhere in the middle, but we could put it back on the recipients of those dollars to help us understand the value that they would get out of it. And then it would be a really hard decision, but we would have to make a decision based on who expressed interest in it and how they justified the need.
I think I had a nightmare about this question last night. I think what you, the first thing I would try to do is increase community involvement and see what the community really would want. I do tend to think arts sometimes may, you know, obviously if you look at the stands at a football game and you look at the fall band concert, there's a difference in number of people attending. Some of the people are the same, but there's obviously much more people showing up sometimes to sporting events than arts. In that way, I think the arts are kind of the medicine. And I would also look to see what we've done recently. I mean, as I, much as I just said about how many more people show up at the football game, I think anybody who attended the performances of Les Mis in the fall would say, well, we can't have that go away. That was such a wonderful thing. I think I would go back to the community and hopefully we could get some help, not necessarily on tax dollars, but truly where people want the money going.
First off, I would not vote for either one of them. I would not eliminate sports or the arts. Kids, there are kids out there that this is the only thing that keeps them in school or this is their vision to go on. And just because we run into a budget problem on the board or in our district, we don't eliminate because what happens is once it's gone, it's gone. And not only that, the kids themselves, I mean, you just can't take it away from them. So you look into other ideas. Can we do more co-ops? Community involvement, definitely. Get out to the community and say, hey, we have a problem here. We don't want to cut this, so we need your help. Look at the budget over again. Where can we possibly shave something? I have heard of this situation in another school district, and what happened, the teachers came forward and said, we are not going to take a raise for the next two years because we don't want to lose these programs. Again, get people involved. Get the word out. Don't sit it in the corner and say, oh, my gosh, this is what we're going to do, and then just do it to the district. Make sure everybody in the district's well aware of what's going on and let them help figure out what they want to do for their district.
Now we move on to our sixth question of the evening, starting with Mr. Bush, which is, what do you believe the board's role is during the elementary construction process?
I think the board basically becomes the fiscal part of the project becomes the board's responsibility. I think it's our job to know where every dollar is going, keep an eye on the budget part of it. I think we pay a superintendent to oversee it and we pay a facilities manager to oversee it and the actual work that's being done and the progress that's being done. I think we can get reports from them and trust them to do their job. But the financial part of it, I think, really falls on the shoulders of the board to make sure that the project stays in budget, make sure we are getting the most out of every dollar that we're spending. This is extra money that we ask from the taxpayers for, so we need to make sure that it's being used properly and that we're going to end up with the absolute best project that we can have when it's said and done.
This is going to kind of sound harsh, but in my opinion, I think it's minimizing the damage. What I mean by that is I want to look at this situation that we got and make sure we're getting the best out of it. I'm not the biggest fan of it. I'm not going to lie to you people. I'm not a fan of it at all. But the voters have voted for it, and this is what we got, and we're going to make the best of it. We've got some money left in Fund 46 that I'm hoping that we can use to repave the parking lot down there. And we're still looking at that floor of that elementary, and we still don't know what we're going to get out of it. Now, Tim has told us that they're pretty positive. They've got enough money in there to cover whatever it is, but there's nothing concrete set in stone that they have everything on hand. They still don't know. And it's going to be our job to manage that when it comes up. If it comes up and everything's great, hey, we're set in sale. But if it comes up and it's going to cost us more money, then we're going to have to figure out, we're going to have to cut something out of that to make it right because we're not going to come back and ask for more money.
So I see the board's role in the elementary school project at this point is really, really looking at every financial decision that's made at this point and trying to ensure that we're stretching those dollars and maximizing the value that we get for the money that's spent on the location. I think that there's opportunity to influence some of the decisions that are happening and to, again, to help stretch, to make sure that we're getting something that will serve the community for a long time to come.
I think in addition to the financial oversight and holding, making sure that people are doing their jobs and every, that things that were agreed on in the past, things that were paid for are actually being delivered. I think we've all been parts of projects sometimes where decisions are made and things are decided on, but then when the actual project is done, you look at it and you think, oh, is that really what I paid for or not? I think it's a matter of truly making sure what we agreed to have done is being done and then making responsible decisions on anything that comes up going forward.
Definitely what everyone else has said, we have to be fiscally responsible. What we had to do was, we had meeting after meeting, and we went over every line purchase that we did. And we made sure that it was the best dollar for dollar we could get. We didn't just say, hey, go and buy our furniture for us. No, we made them, we made sure that everything was accounted for, every single penny. Because we can have them say, yes, we're going to give you this, and then turn around and find out that's not what we got. And because we gave the reins to them, we couldn't blame anyone but ourselves. So we put ourselves in the position that we were going to be on top of every single thing that was done. We were very fortunate that when we did our remodel and our buildup, Brilliant had done it just the year before and actually was using the same contractors. So we went to Brilliant and said, what don't you like? What didn't they do? So we would question and question and question. I guess that's all you can do as a board member. You have to question and question and check the dollars over and over and get the best you can.
Again, fiscally, be fiscally responsible. That's what we need to do. We have, we had passed a referendum for an X amount of dollars. We need to stay within that referendum. We should not be borrowing or taking out of any other account. We have a set amount of dollars in there. We spend that set amount of dollars. We don't go back to the public to ask for more. We don't take more out of funds. We've been lucky enough to put some of that, invest some of that, to get some interest on that, so we should be okay with that. Again, and what we're doing right now is getting updates from the architect, and that's what we're doing right now. We have to make sure we look at everything that they're spending, you know? If we're going to get, you know, new furniture, do we need that new furniture? Do we need that? Can we move furniture that we have in our existing elementary into rooms that are remodeled or other areas? You know, things like that we need to look at. We don't need to waste money. And I think the biggest thing is, again, is going to be when we find out what is under that floor and how much that's going to cost. Hopefully, we'll have enough money. But I do not think we should go into a deferred maintenance fund and pull money out for that because that's not what that money is for. That money is for deferred maintenance, and we have a lot of deferred maintenance in this district. And we need to stick by the referendum. What was planned needs to be done. There shouldn't be any extra things planned because what we voted on as a referendum, everything's explained in that, what that referendum was. So we don't go out and do this, and we don't go out and do that unless we have extra money.
Okay, this next question goes to Mr. Seng. How do you see your role as a board member as benefiting the overall education of students in Mineral Point?
This kind of goes back to one of the earlier questions we had where we had a couple of teachers retired, and I know we were looking at the numbers of classroom sizes. And I've always been, I've always been a person where if we need another teacher for X amount of students, then we have to have one. And I've always, I've had the teacher side for quite a while. They shouldn't be teaching more than 20-some kids. It's out of the question. The students are not going to get the best teach, best education that way. And, you know, it all comes down to the money that we have available. If we have the money to hire more teachers, then great. And if we don't, then we better be budgeting differently in the next coming years so we have the money to get the teachers for them students so they can benefit the best.
So I feel like as a board member, one of the best ways that we can influence the overall education, as Gary stated, is really around our teacher population and ensuring that, as I said before, that we're, that we are attracting and retaining world-class teachers because they are going to make the difference in the education we provide. A beautiful state-of-the-art building looks great, but I believe that you can have the best school in the world or the nicest building, but without high-quality teachers there to support our students, it's not going to make a difference. So students, our teachers have to come first in providing that quality education. And then to help us retain teachers, we need to make sure that we're understanding where they feel like they have needs that aren't being met today because that's going to feed into their ability to support students.
I think one great way to do it is to get involved. And it sounds like, well, you're on the school board, you're involved already. But the school board is more than just attending the meetings. I've gone, as a candidate, I've tried to attend the meetings I can since registering as a candidate. I've attended a breakfast with Mr. Austin at Grey Dog Deli to try to listen, to hear what he has to say. I went on a tour at one of the school board meetings. Mr. Renwick asked if anybody, you know, would like to see what we're doing in the elementary school. Any of the board members would like to see, come see. So I called Mr. Renwick, or actually emailed him, and I said, would that apply to me as well as a candidate? And he said, yes. And I think by getting involved and by going and talking with the people who are actually in the business of educating, we can help support so that students can get all the goods they need, all the services they need, and still be responsible. And that's one of the things I'm happy to have the time to do. And it was actually, I feel, whether I win or not, this whole process of being a candidate has been great. I feel like I've learned more in the last couple of months than I have in a long time. So it's all been very good, and I think that's the way we can actually help the students as well.
As board members, our role again there is to rely on our superintendent, principals, teachers down the road. But we also set for our district high standards. We want the highest standards that we can possibly have. They have a STAR program here, which is a testing program that can They have the STAR program here, which is a testing program that can break down two strands to what is happening in the classrooms. I found that to be really beneficial in our district because how do you judge teachers? You know, we really don't have a test that they take every year to say, well, this teacher had X amount of Ds in their class, they must not be a good teacher. Well, how can we say that about them? We can't say that because, first off, we're taking one class, one teacher, at one time. Follow that class all the way along. Does that class have learning disabilities, more learning disabilities than what some of the other classes had? How do we, how do we track all of this? That's why the STAR program, I think, is very important because it can track that, and it can actually help teachers, and it can help the district make decisions on maybe different types of curriculum. We need to look at the curriculum a little differently. Basically, as a board member, again, you keep your eyes and ears open, and you watch what we're getting given to us as far as what our standards are, what our results are, and keep encouraging it.
I think personally, we need to make sure that our facilities are up to par, that everything is kept in shape, that we don't have a lot of deferred maintenance, that everything is there for kids to use. Our athletic facilities, our extracurricular facilities, our classrooms, we update our curriculum when we need the curriculum updated. We, as a board, will take reports from our Director of Special Education and People's Services, our Curriculum Director. We get those reports because, as Deb said, they're the ones in the trenches, they're the ones that are going to give us that information. And so we look at that information, and maybe we will see different things in that information so we can redevelop the curriculum or look and say, hey, maybe we should be doing this. You know, we want to make sure we have a strong reading curriculum at the elementary. So our kids are learning to read, you know, in kindergarten, first, second, and third grade where they get the basic reading. We have to make sure that's happening, and we can look at that through scores and assessments and things that are going on down at the elementary school. We have to look, are we offering AP classes so the students can get those AP courses before they even go to college? Some of these kids get six credits before they even go to college. You know, it's a wonderful thing we can do here, and we have teachers that are able to do that. We have teachers that are retiring in this district. Most of these teachers have taught 32, 35, 37 years in Mineral Point. They're hard teachers to replace, and it's our, it's our job as a board member to make sure that we hire quality teachers to replace them.
I think the best quality I've had that's affected the students positively here is just continuing to stay engaged and learn. You know, whether it's new education initiatives, finding out what I can, you know, to make that decision, conversations with staff, with students about culture. I think culture's important. I think education to a student is not just what they learn, but the experience they have. So I think talking to the students about their experiences, talking to the staff, how's the culture? And again, being concerned that everybody leaves here after their 13 years and considers it a great experience, and that's two parts. That's their overall experience and what they've learned. And so continuing to stay educated on things we may be able to provide, what's out there that we're not doing to enhance their education, but also things like this with the students involved here, what else can we provide that's going to enhance their overall experience? I mean, just keeping those things at the forefront.
All right, thank you. That leads us to Mrs. Heisner with a bit of a longer question. This is the fourth straight year Mirror Point has earned a five-star report card ranking from the Department of Public Construction. The district's preliminary budget for next year will be discussed soon. Do you believe in giving a pay raise to the staff for their work in helping to achieve these academic results and to help retain and attract high-quality staff?
So I think that not having been privy to the financial compensation structures that are in place, I feel like that is a difficult question to answer. I do think that our teachers should be, and our faculty and our staff should be rewarded for the high-quality job that they're doing, but it has to happen within a balanced budget for the school district. And so, again, without knowing those numbers, it's hard to sit here and say, I believe everybody should, across the board, get a certain percentage of raises. But as I stated before, I think that our ability to attract and retain high-quality teachers needs to be one of our top priorities. So if there's a way to do it, I think it needs to be strongly considered.
Well, I think it's great, you know, that we've been so successful. Obviously, the teachers and the administration have a lot to do with that. However, I think we also need to look out and see, well, what are other districts paying? What are other districts that are performing well paying? And compare and see. From my background in human resources, I did compensation for a long time, and this is a very tough question to answer without knowing all the facts. But I think the first thing to do would be to look out and see, well, are they paid fairly? Because we should assume by paying our teachers fairly that they will do well. Remember, one of my first answers, I said, I assume people want to do well. I assume, I assume everybody here wants us to be a five-star school. I think our compensation should reflect that, but no more than any other district that also would be expecting that same level of excellence. So thank you very much.
First off, I think that the district probably has something in place already because they would have to have a program that they're following for each teacher as far as what their pay is. So I think they have something in line already, so you'd be following what they have currently in line. Yes, it's nice to be a five-star four years in a row, but we also want to stay five-star for the next 10 years, too. So as far as teacher compensation, again, I know that's going to be written into the program already. And it's like, like was mentioned before, it is definitely important that we keep our district in line with other areas because we don't want to lose teachers to other schools. We don't want to lose our good teachers to other schools. Again, it's one of those things where you've got to sit down and you've got to look at all the numbers, and I'm not privy to all the numbers on that, but that's basically what you would do, is just follow the program you have in place.
When we're deciding on raises and for teachers and support staff and staff, we do need to look at our budget. We need to see what's coming in and how much we have for that budget. We've been fortunate in the past few years to provide that raise to our teachers and staff. That has been recommended by the state. As you know, we don't have a union anymore, so that we don't really negotiate that. There's a certain percent, and we've been able to give that top percent. And I think that's important, and we should still be able to remain doing that if our budget allows that to happen. I think teachers deserve that, and I think support staff deserve that, administrators deserve that because they are doing the jobs in, you know, very well to be getting a five-star rating four years in a row. I think it's an exceptional accomplishment, and we've got to make sure that we're attracting those top teachers with the salaries we have. And that, I think, we, right now, we are. We have a salary scale that is very, very good in the area and the population of the schools that we have. If you compare us to like schools, and I'm not talking schools that have 1,000 people or, you know, if you compare us to like schools, we are doing better than some, maybe a little bit under some, but on average, we're right along the line with everybody. And we've been able to do that each year, so hopefully we can continue that.
My answer would be absolutely. I think we have, without question, we have the best staff of any district around, and I think part of that is because recently we have made them a priority in the budget. And being on the Budget Committee and having a financial background, you know, there's ways, you know, many ways to get to the set dollar limit we have, and you kind of have to prioritize, you know, what's going to affect education the most. And having a strong staff, you know, affects the student's education more than anything else. And I think we have a group of teachers who have the ability to, if they have to, to do more with less. So I would find areas to cut back in, to provide less pencils, provide, you know, less auxiliary workbooks, and make sure we're rewarding the staff for the excellent job they're doing so we can retain. And then when we do have an opening, that we can continue to be a destination district for teachers from the area who are looking to be part of our district and continue the trend we've had of hiring tremendous teachers.
Yes, and I'm also in favor of it, too. Obviously, we have a great staff here, and I was part of, last fall, of the actual evaluation of teachers, which is something I've always been interested in, how that worked. And I really enjoyed it because for years I had a different opinion of how it worked and maybe a different opinion of teachers. But now that, I totally understand how it is now, and yeah, they deserve it, just like the rest of the staff does. You know, this isn't just teachers, it's everybody in the district. And it even goes further than that. I mean, it goes to the community. Parents in the community have gave teachers a good product to work with, and that helps teachers do their job a lot better. And I think it says a lot to our district, having teachers that retire here that have taught for 35 years. That means they've obviously been happy in this district for 35 years, and I think that's a testament to everybody in this community and the previous boards that we've had here.
Next question goes to Mr. Jeanette Pfeifer. With one or two meetings a month, all school boards are limited in what they can do. How do you envision the board prioritizing and deciding what's most important to discuss and make priorities to work on?
Well, I think what's most important is what becomes most important to the community at large and also to the staff at the schools. And based on their input, I think that would be what would guide us to what is important. I don't think the school board should be in the habit of determining what truly is important blindly. I think we actually need the input from our superintendent and from the community stakeholders as well.
I have to agree. Basically, it comes down to our superintendent informs us what we're going to be discussing for those two meetings. And if he's not doing his job, then I guess we have a problem. No, it really does come down to the superintendent and what the administration brings forward and what teachers or, and there might be some line items that come up, like, you know, these guys here tonight with their television and such like that. They may come and give a presentation, or different groups will come in and give presentations. Again, that's up to our principals, our staff, and our superintendent to bring forward to us.
Basically, we look to the administration, the building principals, the superintendent. We do have a board retreat where we discuss goals and goals for the district and goals for the superintendent, goals for administration. Those are things that we meet on to be able to talk. We take, we take information from community members, from staff, even from students, and we talk about what we need to do. And so basically, when we get together, we talk about goals. We prioritize those goals. And even in meetings, like, you know, we have the deferred maintenance fund, which I, you know, there's goals there, too. We're trying to prioritize what do we really need first, then second and third and fourth to do with that. And that is, again, it's Mitch's job to give us that input, you know, here's what we think we need, you know, and what the administration needs, and then we look at it. Maybe there's community members that we spoke to or several people spoke to, and we come back and we say, well, this is what these people think. So it is all community involvement, but it's setting those goals, having a meeting and having, or a retreat or whatever you want to call it, and setting up those goals for the year so we know what we're going to be doing throughout the year.
I think it is, I think it's very important, you know, that we have a strong superintendent because at this point, he is setting the agenda for the most part. But I think it's also important for us to remember it is our agenda, and relying on, you know, our employee who we're in charge of to provide us with what to talk about each month, you know, is maybe a little lazy. I think we have to take ownership of the agenda a little more, identify what needs to be discussed, when, maybe develop a calendar, and possibly identify areas where we can, we can bring teachers in or students in, presentations like Tony was talking about, and get some real-world, real-life examples of what's going on in the school. Maybe pick, maybe pick a department each month to present, you know, what's going on in their department, what great things are we doing? We have so many wins here, and we have so many good things going on. It would be great at a board level to hear about more of them, and I think we need to take a little more ownership of that, even if it extends the meeting a half hour, and celebrate our wins more.
I do agree with what that last part Andy said for sure. And my main thing with this one would be communication, starting with the superintendent when he communicates to us. And then we get in those meetings, whether it be a special meeting or what have you, and we listen to his thoughts, and then we take that to the next meeting. And then listen to what the community or the teachers or other support staff or even janitors would have to say, and take action as needed. If it needs to be put in the budget, we put it in the budget. You know, if it's a maintenance issue, we have to sit down, we have to discuss, you know, which one is on the top of the list, you know, which one can be put off? You know, and there's always going to be things, and this is like an everyday life where there's going to be things come up throughout the year where nobody has planned, and we've got to be able to act accordingly and learn how to get around them obstacles.
As I answered in one of the earlier questions, I believe that the board has a responsibility to help define a vision and set goals and priorities for the district, and then the superintendent carries those out. So I see the board meetings primarily as an opportunity for the superintendent and the board to collaborate on what's going well and what things still need to be addressed around those goals. But I think that the board agenda also needs to be driven by what's happening in the community and what things are impacting the school. For example, we recently had this high school and middle school dismissed early due to the smell of gas. I think that clearly is the type of topic that needs to be on the board's agenda so that we can discuss it, understand what steps were taken to resolve the issue, and then just kind of do a retrospective on if this happens again, did we like the way this was communicated, which, as a parent, I felt very informed about what was going on. So, but just having a chance to have that dialogue with the superintendent when we have those types of events. So I think it's both. I think it is, it is the long-term vision and talking about the goals we've set and then regular updates on the, just the happenings in the district and the things that are more dynamic in nature.
Okay, this one, the question starts with Mrs. Hens, which is, one of the biggest issues facing future school boards is funding, both from the state and local level. What would your top three funding priorities be and why?
Top three? Hmm, top three. Pay the bills. What's interesting about that is the funding changes different times. There are certain things that are set in stone. There are certain things that we really don't have a lot of punctuation as being able to, the ability to change. There are certain things that are set in stone, like insurances have to be paid, the bills have to be paid. Out of those, we have the ability to deal with teacher salaries. We have the ability to deal with teacher salaries. There are just not a lot of room you can wiggle around in. Okay, you also have the ability to back up your extracurriculum. What in the world else is there ability to do with? No. You take, hopefully, we won't find ourselves in a bad situation like that where we really have to cut because funding has been cut so badly to our district. I hate being the first one on this question. I hate being the first one on this question. So I'm going to let the rest of you try to figure it out.
I guess my top three funding would be teacher salaries, curriculum and instruction. And, um, my third one would be maintenance because we, we have to have a fund for maintenance. And I know I've mentioned it several times throughout the night, but you know, when you, you know, this building already is, you know, what, almost, what is it, 96 it was built?
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-six? Yeah, 96. And I mean, we have a lot of issues here already, you know? We have an old building at the elementary, which, which, you know, we're remodeling and adding on to. We're hoping that that, that'll do. But they're the three top fundings that I would, I would look at if we had to. Teacher salaries, curriculum and instruction and maintenance.
Uh, teacher salaries or, or taking care of the staff would definitely be number one. Um, number two would be, uh, looking at, you know, our core, our core classes, what we provide the students that, that is working to provide them, um, you know, an excellent education. Um, and I think teacher salary goes along with that. So my top three would be, you know, what's going to directly impact the education and experience of the students the most. And teacher salary, uh, what we're offering around our, our, our core required classes to, to make sure, uh, we are prepared, preparing those students. And then to look at, um, you know, our, our elective courses and being able to fund as many of those as we can, um, in, in the vocational fields, in the arts, um, to make sure we're, we're graduating well-rounded students, students here and providing them as many opportunities as we can, um, stretching, you know, the limited dollars as far as we can.
I guess I'm going to go teachers, the one, support staff, two, maintenance, three. I mean, you can put them in a hat, shake them up. And I mean, if maintenance comes up first, somebody's going to stand there and say it's more important because if the building's falling down, there's no teachers going to want to teach in it. Um, if you don't have a very good support staff that's paid accordingly with the resources to back them, the teachers can't do all that work on their own. Um, and the teachers got to have their money. They deserve it. They work hard for it. And they got to have the resources available in the room, whether it be the, you know, new smart boards or the iPods, iPad minis that we just got for the kids or, there's a lot of things that, you know, goes down the line here. Um, and I'm sure somebody could think of two more things and we could sit here and all have a good discussion about why those other two are necessary. And you'd probably be right.
So I'd like to do the video replay because I have the exact same three answers as Gary and I think he looked at my paper. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Um, no, so I had teachers and particularly maintaining, um, student to teacher ratios, um, and then the support staff because there's so much that has to happen in order for the school to function well that's, um, that's behind the scenes. And so we need to make that a, a priority to keep things running smoothly. Um, and then the facility upkeep and maintenance, um, because properly maintaining our facility and, and investing in ongoing upkeep is going to allow us to, um, potentially avoid some, some bigger dollar issues down the road and, and allow us to continue to provide the services we want to provide.
I, I think first, we need to honor all the commitments we've already made, be it to teachers, to staff. If we've made a commitment, uh, as a, as a school district, we need to continue to honor, uh, those commitments, uh, to, to staff, to, to, to teachers, uh, everybody like that. Secondly, I think we need to continue to be good stewards of the money we've already invested in buildings. So I would say maintenance then would be number two, uh, because we've already spent, uh, such, uh, so much money making such nice buildings, uh, to let them all kind of fall apart, I think would be, would be actually dereliction, uh, of our duty. Uh, and then finally, supplies, supplies that are needed for the education of the students.
So now we're going to open up to our audience and see if they have any questions.
Then, first a comment or an observation on the earlier question about, do you support raises for, for the staff? That question really doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I mean, of course, you all support a raise for the staff if they needed. And you really answered the, the question correctly. Uh, and we had that same question last year and I wish that question would stop. My question is, uh, we've been blessed with, uh, increase in open enrollment over the last five, six years. That is something to keep an eye on because if that starts to go the other way and our expenses are up here, other schools are hungry for open enrollment too. I mean, we were kind of one of the earlier schools to, to realize that and to pull kids out of other districts. And with that came, came extra income. So what, how important is open enrollment to the six years?
Am I supposed to go first? Well, open enrollment's very important. And I think one of the reasons why we enjoy a, a lot of open enrollment is because of our five-star rating, number one, our, our teachers, we have good curriculum, we have great athletic programs and extracurricular programs. All that comes into open enrollment. It's not always just academics. Kids don't know, you know, kids don't open enroll just for academics. A lot of them open enroll for athletic programs. A lot of them open enroll for extracurricular activities. Um, and so I think Mineral Point, we have a mix of all of that. And I think it's very important that we keep that going. And that's why that rating that we get from the state is very important. Because if you come and you're driving around and you're going to Dodgeville and maybe down to Darlington, over to Pla-, even Platteville, and you're like, huh, you know, Mineral Point has, has nice buildings, nice schools. Look at their curriculum and, you know, their kids are getting five-star ratings. Let's check that out. And then people move here because of that. I mean, there are people that have told me, you know, we moved to Mineral Point for the schools. I think Bob mentioned that, um, tonight. Uh, he moved here for the schools, you know? And then he got everything else that's so wonderful about Mineral Point at the same time. So, but I think it's very important and we have to keep an eye on that because if it does drop, we have to figure out why it's dropping.
I think it's important. I think as Tony said, it's a direct reflection of what we offer here, how well we've done. Uh, this is where, where students and their parents want to go to school. Um, I think it's also, um, important to realize that we don't get full funding on open enrollment. So I think that's important. I think, um, there's going to come a time soon where, where the board may need to pair with, with the city and figure out, um, what we can do to provide more housing opportunities. That's what I hear all the time, is there's no affordable housing, there's no small family housing. And our real issue is, is we're getting some open enrollment because people have to move to Dodgeville because they can't find housing here and they open enroll here. And we end up getting partial funding when if there were opportunities for them to live here in this great community, they certainly would. So I think open enrollment's important, but I think in terms of funding, we have to look at, uh, what can we do? What impact can we have on creating more opportunities for the district to grow that will get us fully funded?
Well, the thing about open enrollment that I think is, is interesting and makes it great is that the parents are driving the kids. And I don't mean physically driving them. I mean, the parents are the driving force behind it, meaning the parents want these kids to succeed, all right? And the parents are going to make sure they're going to succeed. And therefore, the teachers also have the parents' full back. Whether they're here for sports or education, these parents have brought their kids to this district for one reason, to excel. And we usually excel given our five-star rating. The other thing with open enrollment is, in a way, I do think it's a fine line. And I want you to understand what I'm saying. There's a lot of housing subdivisions planning going up where people are going to be having families in this district. And we can't overcrowd ourselves with open enrollment and then turn away, well, you can't turn them away, but, you know, then we're overcrowded. If you kind of understand what I'm saying. There's going to be a fine line in the future with all these houses going up and subdivisions and that where if open enrollment does start to decline, I don't know how we adjust for that, but that could be years down the road too.
I see open enrollment as a great way for us to fill out class sizes, um, when we are not, when we have certain class sizes that are not at, um, at our published capacity. So if you've reviewed the board's policies, we publish, um, a targeted class size at different grade levels. And so if we have class sizes that happen to be smaller, um, for example, this year's, um, fifth graders is a, is a slightly smaller class, that's a great opportunity for us to open enroll students in there and, um, maximize the capacity of the teachers that we already have in place. But if we're talking about open enrollment that is going to push us to having class sizes that are larger than the ideal student-to-teacher ratio or would require us to bring on additional staffing, then that probably doesn't make the most sense for our community. As a school district, our first, our first priority is to serve the taxpayers and the students that reside within this district. And so any additional students that we're open enrolling, um, need to fit within our, within the cost structure that we've already created.
I think just how you ended that answer was, was exactly my thoughts. Uh, if there's room in a class and we, we continue to, to attract these, uh, people through open enrollment, these additional students, uh, and we want to keep doing that, we need to ask ourselves what's make, what makes us a destination district? You know, why do people, uh, want to come here? And, and I think we look at those programs that we do have. Uh, of course, you know, like sports has been mentioned and things like that. But I think we also prepare people academically so well. And when you look at where some of the kids are going, you know, onto school after graduating here, it's, it's wonderful. And I don't just mean, mean, uh, four-year colleges, but we have tech ed programs that are wonderful. We have the FFA, we have all the ag programs. Uh, I'm always, I come in, uh, in spring to have a mock interview day and to see what all these kids can do and what they want to do. Uh, I understand why. We are an attractive district and why people want to open enroll in. Uh, and if we do end up in a, in a problem where we do have so many, uh, where some of these housing problems end up being solved, we have more people in the district, well, that, that's just, just more good on us. And then the open enrollment issue, if people are no longer choosing us, will kind of fall away and we'll replace them with actual resident students.
Uh, with the open enrollment, um, I'm not sure what we have for numbers. How many students could we hold in our high school?
I believe it was built for well over 300. So we're not there in the high school. So we've got plenty of room here.
So the answer, you know, the concern about turning a, um, turning open enrollment students away because we have too many of our own kids coming here, we don't really have to deal with that at this point. Open enrollment, what's good about that is because of the fact it does bring in, I realize it doesn't give us full dollar amount, but still it, it does help us for numbers. Um, it does help us for state aid. Um, providing open enrollment, we also have the ability that if we do become too full, we have the right to turn away open enrollment also. So it's not that we're stuck with having to have open enrollment kids come and overcrowd our school district. Um, what attracts them, of course, is you've got good buildings. You have great teachers. You have AP classes. You have a great special ed program in this district. Um, your curriculum, extracurriculums, we have, we have it all going. I'm really happy about that. So yes, bring on more open enrolled, oh, open enrolled kids as far as I'm concerned, fill the school up.
Are there any more questions up here? None? Okay. So then we will wrap up tonight with closing statements from each candidate. And it will go to Mr. Dolph first. Oh, sorry. Mr. Bush, sorry.
Again, I, I just want to express how exciting it's been to be up here with six great candidates. Um, you know, I, I think you could, you could pull three votes out of a hat and we would end up with, with a tremendous, um, three people on the board. That's great to see. It's great to see, um, everybody excited about what's going on here. Um, I just have had a great time being part of the process and making the decisions and providing some, some financial insight, um, at the budget level, um, and support to the superintendent, um, to, to help with the budgeting part of it and, and seeing, um, you know, the hard work that we've done, um, you know, come to, come to life and, and the great experiences these students have had. And I want to continue to do that and make sure that, um, that we are making sure that all students are having a great experience. Um, you know, I think we have a, a good culture here, um, you know, but, but it's also been said that good is the enemy of great. And I think we still have some work to do, um, to, to reach all students and to make sure that every student, um, in every grade has a tremendous experience here. And I'd just like to be part of that process.
Well, I just want to thank everyone for even being here tonight and wish all you guys the best of luck. I've really enjoyed the last four, five, five months I've been on board. There's a lot of things I've learned, a lot of things I didn't actually understand what happened until now, which is the reason I wanted to get on it. Um, and I wanted to get back to this district. And I look at this, uh, this community in this district right now and what we have, and you people probably all know this, but I think it is so special that right now, every neighbor and community is so jealous of us for the fact we get five-star ratings in school. All right, our kids are smart. We excel in every single sport we step on, whether it be a football field, the basketball court or a wrestling mat. We are excelling. And I think that's just such a great co-, you know, compliment to the community and everybody involved in this district, this board. And I just want to keep it going.
When my oldest daughter, who's now in fifth grade, uh, was in 4K, there was a group of parents from, um, a class a couple of years older than her who were approaching the school board because they were concerned about class size for their students who were in maybe second or third grade at the time. Um, and they had asked to have people attend the school board meeting and make a statement about the importance of class size. So, um, I attended that school board meeting and this is now, uh, six or seven years ago. But I remember from that, that was my first encounter with the Mineral Point School District School Board. Um, and I remember at that meeting how impressed I was with the thoughtful dialogue that was held by the school board members and how they gave serious consideration to both sides of the issue. Um, concern about being responsible with taxpayer dollars as well as considering the educational needs of that class. And it was, it was unusual. If they added a fourth section to, I, and again, I don't remember exactly which grade it was, um, what would they do with that section going forward? They wouldn't need four sections of that grade in future years. Um, and so it was just a really great dialogue. And since then, being a member of the school board has been on my radar. Um, I'm now at a point in my personal life as well as my professional life where I feel like, um, I have the opportunity and the time to give back. And so, um, this is, this is something that I'm very interested in doing. And I really look forward to regardless of the outcome of, of this election, continuing to be engaged in, um, in the process of, um, of looking at how our schools are run and how we can make them better going forward.
Thank you. Uh, I just, uh, really also wanted to say how wonderful it is that we have six people competing for three spots. Uh, it's nice to give you all choice, give the community at, at large a choice. Uh, and I think it says a lot about the community, especially the people who do show up to things like this. You know, I talked about the football game and how many people are there on a Friday night. Wouldn't it be nice if that many people came to a forum for the school board? Uh, and that would be nice. Or even, even a third of those people would show up to a school board meeting once in a while. And I think this whole process of, of becoming a candidate for the school board, uh, has made me a better, just a better citizen into, of the community in terms of making myself more educated, uh, about what goes on in the schools. Uh, I would have never thought about going on a tour of the school otherwise, you know, of the elementary school in particular. Uh, so I think the process is good. And I encourage other people to think about it in the future as well, uh, to, to run for the school board. And I mentioned community involvement in one of my answers before. And I think, you know, again, I need to thank all of you just for being here because nothing says community more involvement more than actually showing up. Uh, so, so thank you.
Again, good luck to everybody also. Um, it is great to see as many people turning out to want to be on the school board as what we have here tonight. Um, I, the reason I want to be back on a school board is because I just love the feel of being in the, involved in the board. I love the information that you find out about your district and about your kids and how it makes you feel like you're a greater part of something very small, or maybe it's the other way around. Um, I think that education is so important. I, we, raising our three kids, we had people ask us, why do your kids doing what they're doing? And it's because we didn't want them to stay in the kind of life that we And it's because we didn't want them to stay in the kind of life that we had. I mean, we had a good life, we worked hard, but it wasn't something I wanted our kids to do. I wanted our kids to be able to spread their wings and go out. And that's what I want to see kids in, in school districts do. I want to be able, them to feel like there's something for them out there. And I feel that the teachers we have in this district are fantastic and I think they encourage those kids every day to do that. And I guess I'd just like to be part of, part of that is my reason for running.
I would just like to say that, you know, I'm proud to be a part of Pointer Nation. I've always been proud to be a pointer. I could have moved many different places when I came back. I could live in Madison because I work in Madison, but I choose not to. I choose to live in Mineral Point. My family goes back to 1902 in Mineral Point, Wisconsin, and there was always pride in being a pointer and there still is. As you know, my sister works here, my brother has lived here all his life. And I want to give back to that community that gave me so much growing up. I had awesome teachers, one of them sitting here in the audience tonight, Mr. Ash. And I, I want to give back to what Mineral Point gave me because they gave me all the success, all the knowledge, everything I needed to be successful in my life. And I want to give back. I want these kids that go through Mineral Point School District to have that same opportunity, to be successful through their life, to look back at Mineral Point and say, "You know what? It was a small school, it was a small town, but I learned everything I needed to, to do to move to New York City, to move to Los Angeles, to move to Madison, to stay here." I don't, you know, I didn't need anymore, I didn't need to go to a big place. And I'm running because, that's one reason why. The second reason is because I'm an educator and I want to give back to education. And I think I have a lot of background in that educational area to help out on the school board. Well, I would like to say thank you to the class here, the media class. I got, I watch you guys every day up on my, at my desk. And also Kristin for, for doing this, doing so much with the students and helping them out so much. Thank you.
I'd like to thank the moderators. I think if you want to ask, you know, come up to a candidate and ask them a question specifically, feel free to do so, otherwise, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Yeah. Class.